Well, it's about 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 6th. So I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started, for the public that's here and for anyone that may be watching us online, this is our first night with a new system, which is called Civic Clerk. And so from here on out, we will be running our meetings through a new program to be even more transparent with public when it comes to how we vote and who makes motions, so on and so forth. So you'll see, for people who are here, you'll see a screen in the back as the agenda goes along. And at times when a motion is made, we have to pause a little bit and make sure our fabulous new Civic, our new clerk will be able to input all the information correctly. So I just wanted to let you know about that from the get-go. And with that, we do have an agenda in front of us with consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Greenstein and a second by Councilman Vasquez. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries and we have an approved agenda and consent agenda. With that, the first thing on our agenda is under Public Recognitions and Presentations. There's two tonight. And the first one is, I'm really happy to talk about is for Peg Evans-Brown. Now, when I saw this came up and know that you're leaving us to another city and we're cutting your term a little bit short here, but I realized how long I've been doing this as mayor. As someone who I originally pointed to the Planning Commission here, who has served almost eight years on the Planning Commission, which is really, she'll go down as one of the last people in the city of Lacey to be able to do that because what she was able to do at the time, she's served an unexpired term of two years. Then she got two full more three-year terms, and so that's eight years. Since then, we've actually changed some of that language. And so going forward, six years is all you can serve. So the fact that you served eight years on our Planning Commission is just unbelievable. Then you also think about some of the things that she did on our Planning Commission during that time. She was involved in the 2016 Vision Lacey Comp Plan update. And that's something that is coming around for another look. And so here you are, you did it originally. Now we're gonna take a look at, again, getting prepared to do major comp plan updates again. Also, you looked at our Midtown Forum-based codes, which we've been very excited about and we've seen some success already in Midtown and how it's helped transform that area. Of course, the Depot District SubArea Vision, and we're seeing that starting to come to life over there as well. The pedestrian bicycle plan, the Housing Action Plan. And you've always been passionate when it comes to our housing, making sure that we have enough housing types for everyone in the city of Lacey. Along with that, the same thing, the Urban Forestry Plan. And another big passion of yours is, of course, the Climate Action Plan. And what you've been able to bring to the city of Lacey through your eight years has really been tremendous. I've always appreciated your thoughtfulness when it comes to the decision-making. And our Planning Commissioners never get enough credit. They're meeting twice a month, just like a lot of times where the regular city council does. And they also have to put on a lot of the public hearings. Especially, you know, through your time, you've been through some, definitely some interesting public hearings where people are maybe not happy with some decisions that you're making. And you have to sit there and take that all in and recommend to the full council, you know, what's best for the city. And you've always been able to do that. And I was very proud to appoint you at the beginning. I'm really happy to, here at the end, to, if you could come up, please.
And on behalf of the Lacey City Council, really, City of Lacey and anyone who has, I think, maybe biased, been fortunate to live in the city of Lacey through this major transformation that we've had in our community with all the growth that we've had. You've had a direct hand in making sure we're in a wonderful place to live. And so on behalf of the City Council, I offer you the distinguished Public Service Award for your time on Planning Commission from 2016 to 2023.
Thank you very much.[1214.83][1214.83][applause]
Since some of you have gone through the gauntlet of the Planning Commission to now where you are, I know you understand the work that was described and it's overwhelming. And I didn't know eight, I thought six, but it's eight. And I know you get a lot of complaints. So I just wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge some of the things that the City Council has been doing and I personally benefit. I'm a property owner and I'm benefiting from Carpenter Road repave. It's marvelous. Also, Mullen Road, the flowers, I drive by there a lot and I always feel warm-hearted towards the gardening people that go around doing that. And Mullen Road is actually being finished and it's repaved all the way down to the train trestle. So I was very sorry to hear about the Greenwood fire because we did meet with the Greenwood leader and talked about zoning change. So I'm going to send a donation to their rebuild fund. I hope some of you might think of that, too. I also wanted to just mention, Carolyn, thank you so much for the work that you've done on the housing. It's been a really difficult process and took a lot of work with all the different jurisdictions. But I think that we're on our way to being attuned to the needs of the people who are on the streets now. I also have to say a thank you to the Parks and Rec for the music in the park. And also the leadership of David, our current president of the board or the commission. And I wore a Dancing Goats pin because that's his thing. Also Ryan Andrews, our current leader. And also those of all of you who recognized the talent and those who were instrumental in recognizing Rick Walks and put him in a good spot. So, thank you so much. And a shout out to the Dalai Lama, who's 88 today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peggy.[1358.44][1358.64][applause] I'm gonna come up here for this next one. I'm gonna come up here for this next one. I think it's pretty well-known about one of the jewels that we have in the city of Lacey, something I've been very proud of to have worked on from the beginning, and that's the Lacey Veterans Services Hub. This is a place where we're training veterans and their families' lives. And it came out of a lot of discussion here in the area about needing more services for veterans and their families. And specifically, early on, the need for mental health services for veterans and their families after my first cousin had committed suicide and I was at a loss and knew that we needed to find some way to provide services, more services down here. Those early days when we were trying to figure out how we pull together services for veterans, there's been one person who stands out to me from the get-go as being a part of that process, someone the city immediately learned of. He was there working with Thurston Counties with their veteran work. And that's Gary Walker. And the early days of how to conceptualize how we bring this type of services when our first step, of course, was we went to the federal government, said, hey, we need your federal government. You provide services to veterans, we need those here in our city. Please, can you provide them? And here's all the statistics that shows we have more active duty living here than the other city in Western Washington, so on and so forth. And I remember coming back from Washington DC with our former city manager, Scott Spence, and we had just flown out there to meet with the Veterans VA. And they basically said, sorry, you will never see a veterans outstation which provides mental health services down in Lacey. It's just, you're too close to Tacoma. And that was naturally a time where, as a city, as a bunch of volunteers, we could have given up on the process, like we gave it our all. But there were people in this area who were just as passionate about this issue as I was. And Gary was one of them. And so I remember the early days, sitting around the table, and Gary's there. And we started talking about, well, what if we could just get all these service providers, we could just get them under one roof? And that had never been done before. We have all these nonprofits out there, yet they weren't working together, coordinating together, all for the benefit of veterans. And I remember we saying, as long as we put veterans first, it will all work out. And Gary was there from day one. And after all this time, he's deserving a retirement from all of his hours that he's put in. And I know, I know Gary, that this Veterans Services Hub would not have been stood up and has been successful. Because everyone was looking to see a new idea fail, right? Because new ideas are difficult. But Gary was one of those people who was a volunteer extraordinaire, was there from day one and made sure it didn't fail. So Gary, if you could come up.
So, on behalf of this City Council, on behalf of myself, and on behalf of all the thousands at this point, thousands of veterans who have been served through your, through your hard work, I'm gonna prize you this outstanding volunteer service award for veterans of our community, to Gary Walker, with gratitude from the Lacey City Council, say, from today.[1657.34][1657.54][applause]
You guys didn't tell me I had to get up and talk. So my wife and my son, I want to start by thanking them because all the hours, you know, working, working full-time, doing this. If my wife wasn't there to keep the house going, keep the kids moving, you know, the family calls her the anchor, you know. So to my wife and my son back there, I just want to say, say thanks. But thanks, Mayor, I appreciate everything. This was a, this was a joint effort. You know, the county Veterans Board, we knew we had to get everybody together and we were trying to figure, where do we go, why do we do this? And, you know, it's the old concept of one-stop shop. Let's get all the providers there, because all the veterans are going all over, you know, everywhere, and they just can't get services. And then Steve Kirkman, God bless him, you know, stood up and said, Lacey will get to building. And it's like, you know, this is a man of heaven, you know, like, we'll pull this off. But you're right, I heard, I don't know how many times, all this will fail. I'll give you guys six months, you know. And my wife will make fun of it, but I'm just a stubborn old hillbilly, you know, from North Carolina, go hills, you know. And we're not going to give up. There's too many people here in the area who need stuff that we just can't walk away. You know, so we got up and got going, and then Keith came in, you know. So, you know, passing baton off to him, it was like, we went from an old T-model to rocket sled, you know, Keith stepped in. And it's just, it's really, it's really taken off. And it's just, you know, helping each other. And as every veteran here in the room will tell you, we don't And as every veteran here in the room will tell you, um, we don't leave anybody behind. You know? When we leave, everybody leaves. We get help, everybody gets help. So we're not going to leave any, anyone behind, you know? So, um, thank you for all the support the city has done, you know? This was, uh, we couldn't have done it without you guys, you know? This was, uh, you know, I think this was a beautiful joint effort, this was a teamwork, not only just with the county, but with the city and then the volunteers and all the providers coming in, you know? You know, so, um, I knew it was going to work when all these old veterans came in and were all pissed off. I've been going this guy and nobody's there, they come back. But somebody said, come in there one more time, and they came in, and then we didn't hear anymore after about six months. And we knew it was working.
Yep.
So they didn't give up and they came back. Anyway, I'll, I'll stop you guys.
Well, thank you, Gary, and, um, this is not the, the last time we're going to be celebating Gary, um, tomorrow at the Lacey Veteran Services, uh, by eleven AM. We're also having, uh, a little, uh, ceremony for you as well. So, um, uh, I look forward to seeing you again tomorrow.
Okay, beautiful, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, everyone.
I always get, uh, emotional when I talk about the Veteran Services Hub and the amazing things that's been going on there. Um, looks like it's back to me for this next agenda item as well. As this, uh, council, um, knows and the, the city is known as, oh, sorry, public comment. We have no one who signed up for public comment tonight. Um, we did have one public, um, some written public comment, um, but if anyone is wishing to address this council on any items, please come up now. Seeing none, I will now go on to our, uh, this next agenda item, um, under the mayor's report. Um, I, I mentioned it earlier, but, uh, when, uh, Scott Spence, our former city manager, um, left, um, to take, uh, uh, the job, you know, for his family, uh, this council, um, felt the, felt the pressure from day one of how are you going to replace, um, Scott Spence? Um, and that, we, I know this full council felt it, and we wanted to make sure that we were going to go through a process that we, we knew that we could be confident in, um, at the end of the day. Um, and, uh, one of the things that we realized pretty early on when we had our, our acting city manager take the helm was that, um, he was doing really good at this job, right? He was doing really good at this job, and no, no one was surprised at all. Uh, and we were, uh, felt, um, pretty happy that, you know, he had put his application in, um, and we went through the process, and, um, this council then gave me the authorization, um, to go into contract negotiations for, for Rick Walk to be our next city manager. I have checked back in with the council after that, um, and in our board packet, you can see a summary of the city manager's, um, employment agreement form. And so with that, I would move that we appoint Rick Walk as our city manager and prove that, improve the execution of the employment agreement in that form that's been provided to this council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Stedman. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, Rick, thank you for taking this job. I feel like the city is in very good hands with your leadership. You and I have been working together for over ten years now. I know you, I trust you, and these, this time since December, you've led the city with a steady hand while keeping a hand on your old job as well, and you've done incredibly well. So I'm looking forward to many good years ahead.
Is there any other discussion? Go ahead.
I think it's telling that after we put forward Rick's name as the preferred candidate and we entered contract negotiations with him, how many people in the community came up to me and said, oh, you're making a good decision, right? Rick has been working with people in other cities and with the county and with nonprofits throughout our community for many years, and he has a really good reputation. A lot of people really respect his capabilities. And so that was, again, I, I had no doubts already, but just hearing that affirmation from a number of people who saw us making this decision is, it was wonderful. So you got a lot of, a lot of good connections and a lot of support out there.
I agree. Is there any other discussion?
Um, I, I, as, along with what Councilmember Vasquez says, uh, the, the decision to bring, to bring this, uh, to Rick was, it, it wasn't really a difficult decision, uh, and Rick's reputation in the community is actually amazing. Uh, in addition to that, his reputation at the governor's office, uh, is absolutely amazing as well. And so I'm definitely looking forward to, to this appointment.
Any other discussion? Well, I've, um, I've had the, obviously the privilege for, for quite a while to work, work with you, Rick, and now, um, as in your acting role as city manager, um, it's obviously, uh, it's a very important, um, relationship between the, the mayor and the city manager, as is with the entire city council, and, um, I really look forward to continue to work with you and all the great things that are ahead for the city because of your leadership. With that, anything else? That we have a, a motion and a second to appoint Rick Walk as our city manager and execute his employment agreement, um, in the form that's been provided for us. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And with that, Dave is going to swear in Rick Walk.
Thank you. Repeat after the aye statement.
Aye, better go with the Walk Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And to the best of my judgment.
Skill.
Skill.
And ability.
And ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of city manager.
Perform the duties of the office of city manager.
Of the city of Lacey.
Of the city of Lacey.
In and for Thurston County, Washington.
In and for Thurston County, Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay.
Well, if I could take a few minutes just to, you know, say a few words and, and thank you, uh, city council. I, uh, really do appreciate this honor and opportunity to be the next city manager of the city of Lacey. Um, first, before I forget and before I, I do want to introduce my family that's in the audience right now, and introduce my wife, Carol Walk, and my daughter Olivia and daughter Charlotte. Very happy they were able to join, uh, me tonight, uh, for this. Uh, but again, I, I do want to say I really am honored, uh, of this, uh, the council making this selection, and I really do look forward to, uh, you know, building on all the successes that the city council, the past city managers, all the director staff and the great, um, staff of this organization have done to serve this community, to make it the best, uh, quality of place for people to live, play, recreate, work, all those different things. And as, uh, you heard from Peggy Evans Brown earlier tonight, you know, just all the different things, it's not just, uh, about, uh, land use issues, it's not just about transportation, everything down to, um, the landscaping, the parks maintenance, the parks and, uh, culture activity, the safety that's provided by our police department, the type of policing our police department does in, in developing those relations in the community, uh, all the infrastructure projects and keeping the water and sewer, all those different things that go that this organization and this community and this council has done over the years while, I mean, uh, planning, proactively planning for a fast-growing community that's grown by leaps and bounds over the last thirty years. Uh, so I'm really excited to take on and build all those successes and work with this great, uh, organization to continue that going forward. So again, uh, I appreciate it and I look forward to the, the next chapter. Thank you.
Make him walk the line?
Yeah, make him walk the line.
Gotta walk the line, Rick.
Congratulations.
Oh, right.
Website?
We don't, Lonnie's the only one who was smart enough to wear a jacket.
I gave, I gave up the ties of COVID, but still wear a suit, just no, no ties.
Sure.
Hey, Mayor, I will say, uh, Rick's department that he led, um, you know, starts with customer service, and the, and the customer is the resident of Lacey. Um, and, you know, he's bringing all that, um, to the, uh, the manager's position, so, um, yeah, I, like I said, I just can't say enough.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Councilmember Stedman. I, I agree. Um, I guess now is a good enough time as ever. I, I think this council maybe has been made aware of, I'm not sure if the entire city, I think we might put out a press release that the city of Lacey, uh, was named by Fortune Magazine as, uh, one of the fifty best places to live for families. Um, I think we're ranked number twenty-five, so number twenty-five.
In the.
Yeah, in the nation, right?
In the nation.
In the nation. So twenty-fifth best, twenty-four, twenty-fourth best pla- place for families to live.
It's improving over the years.
In the city of Lacey.
Right?
And the, and the thing is, is that, obviously, that just didn't happen overnight, right? We didn't, we're, we're, it's been really nice recently, we've been saving all these accolades from, you know, places like Fortune Magazine, uh, you know, the best place to start a small business in the state, city of Lacey. I mean, they, they keep going on and on, and it, it didn't just happen by accident, right? It happens over long, many years of planning, having great leadership, having a great city council, being able to, um, make adjustments, um, when necessary. But as, as Councilmember Stedman, uh, just said, it's always been about customer service here in the city of Lacey, on everything we do, from our directors, from our, from our police, through everything else, right? The city of Lacey is here to provide services to our community. That's why we exist. Sometimes I think cities forget that, but we never forget in the city of Lacey. We're here to provide exceptional service, um, and we are very grateful that we have you as our city manager, um, to continue to provide that, that great customer service.
So I, I want to see us in the top fifteen, so the pressure's on, Mr. Walk, and congratulations.
Is that a new name tag you have?
Yeah, look, now you can put the new one out.
Mm-hmm. Long time coming, right there.
And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council, and I guess back to business, and, uh, um, we have a, a couple of items on the city manager's report tonight. I want to start out with one that's not on the list. It's a, a report out on a, a routine, uh, inter-local agreement that I signed about two weeks ago. And just as a reminder, routine inter-local agreements are those that, uh, are extensions of previous agreements that don't increase cost or scope, uh, change, or they're less than twenty-five thousand dollars. And I, um, signed an inter-local agreement with, um, Thurston Regional Planning Council to do some, um, baseline work for us. Uh, if you might recall, in the last legislature, one of the legislative bills that came out was related to housing and require, admitting the Drought Management Act to require in our comp plan processes to not only just develop a housing element and strategies, but also to, uh, develop data and demographics and look at the allocation of housing based off of income levels between, uh, um, a market rate, um, uh, uh, low market rate poverty and extreme poverty, as well as shelters and other types of port, uh, housing, uh, facilities. So in order to do that, we're going to have to do a deep dive. Fortunately, we were, we're kind of ahead of the game in a lot of other communities in that Housing Action Plan that we developed in concert with, uh, Olympia-Tomwater a couple of years ago, it got some baseline data, but now it's for TRPC to go back in and kind of parse that out and allocation of what we should be planning for, for each of the jurisdictions in the county going forward. So with that agreement, uh, I signed, it's a contract for, uh, just under six thousand, five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for TRP to start doing that work, providing that data for our planning crew to develop the next update to the conference plan. Uh, second item on our city manager's report is, um, a, uh, inter-local agreement for the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance. Uh, there's actually going to be two actions under this with, uh, two inter-local agreements, and I'll turn it over to Dave to provide the, the backstory to this.
Thank you, city manager, um, council, good evening. Uh, before you, this evening is, as Rick indicated, another, um, inter-local agreement related, these are regional agreements related to the opioid litigation settlement. Um, this is a quick recap, it was about a year ago, a little over a year ago, in April of twenty twenty-two, the council authorized the city manager to enter what was called the One Washington Memorandum. Now, that was an allocation agreement amongst all the cities and jurisdictions in Washington about how to utilize, um, opioid funds. In accordance with that agreement, participating local governments, of which Lacey is a participating local government, um, they are required to enter into regional agreements, creating a regional structure to specify specifically how these funds were going to be utilized and spent. Um, during the past year, there's been two separate settlements from the Attorney General's Office, um, one specifically against the three largest distributors, and then a separate settlement with manufacturers and pharmacies and dispensers. So the time is now, funds have begun to come in, and so it's, it's time now for these regional agreements. As Rick indicated, there are two separate ones. The first is the regional agreement of the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region. There's a lot of long titles here, so, um, I'll try to, I'll try to be clear with them. This first agreement, I just consider to be the regional, the bigger agreement, broader agreement in scope. It, uh, it establishes the opioid abatement council as required by the One Washington Memorandum, the master kind of agreement. Um, and it, and it establishes this council to oversee the allocation, distribution, uh, and expenditures. It establishes that independent subcommittees are to be created, um, which is what the second agreement's going to do. It indicates that each participating local government, like Lacey, will directly receive their opioid, their funds and be directly responsible for the distribution of those funds. Um, it indicates that administration fees shall be actual costs, not to exceed ten percent. It indicates that if a participating, uh, or if a governmental entity elects not to retain its allocation, it'll go up to who it's counting and be redistributed within its region. Um, it establishes auditing and reporting requirements, these are all trickled down from the, from the master agreement. And it specifies that each subcommittee is responsible for its own oversight, okay? So that's the first agreement. And the, the members of that agreement are all of the counties within, um, our region, which is not only Thurston, but Calis, Gray's Harbor, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Waukeah County, and all the participating cities within those counties. Those are the participants and the signatories to this regional agreement. So that's the first action. The second requested action this evening is specific to, um, what's, what's being called the Interlocal Agreement for Opioid Abatement Council Independent Subcommittee Agreement. This is specifically between Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater. Um, this agreement authorizes the ex, oh, no, excuse me, this agreement establishes what's called the Thurston County and Cities Council. This council is going to consist of one represented, appointed by each jurisdiction's local government, um, governing body, and they'll serve in a three-year term. The council will meet at least annually to review and fulfill oversight obligations regarding the distribution of the funds. So this is a requirement of that regional agreement. The agreement establishes that each party is responsible for public records, public records maintenance, and all auditing requirements. Finally, this agreement also, like the regional agreement, establishes that each party retains full control, autonomy, and discretion over the use and distribution of the funds, um, provided the funds, of course, are used for purposes consistent with the One Washington Memorandum. So the recommended actions are listed before council, again, the city- Again, the city is requesting two separate actions and that the council authorize the city manager to execute both of those agreements. It is important that the first one listed, if council does take action, that they take action on that first one first. So, if there's any questions?
So I would move to authorize the city manager to execute the regional agreement of the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance Region participating local governments.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilor Vasquez.
So for the administrative funding, I looked at the list of approved uses, and it's quite lengthy. You can use these funds for a lot of different things. I know one of the perils of grants is often that there's insufficient administrative funds allowed so that you can't actually spend the money on staff to do the work. But that doesn't seem to be the case with this funding, right? The, the money is not limited so that we cannot spend it on staff. We could employ um public safety personnel or service providers using these funds to do this work. Is that right?
I, I believe that's accurate, but yeah, and I would all also just emphasize that before any use of funds was used, we'd be sure that it was appropriate use of those funds to do so, but yes, I, I would say that.
Not achieving those goals of the settlement agreement of the, of the types of uses and the programs and services.
Right, we could hire someone to do that specific work. We could not hire someone to do a little bit of this work and then use them to do other work as well. They have to be spending their time doing this work.
Correct.
And, and that will indeed be a decision by Thurston County, Olympia, Lacey, and Tomwater, right?
Well, we would have um autonomy over the use of our funds. We can use them for, you know, specific for Lacey issues or regional, pull it for regional for better effect. But that'd be a future agreement, but the uh, the operating council, if you will, that meets annually, that'd be our reporting mechanism, show how we're using those funds in compliance with the settlement agreement.
The city's in control of its own funds.
So, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
In control of our own funds, but we can pull them with other jurisdictions, because I mean, the bottom line is, there's not, when you look at the, the dollar amounts, if we were to take the city dollars to try to do anything, there'd be very little we could do. There just isn't enough money there to do anything on our own, as opposed to as a, as a group of entities, the cities and the county, we could probably get something accomplished that had some more weight.
Correct, there's, there's um, and also those funds are coming on annual installments, so we're not getting the whole lump sum to be anywhere, so it's a, it's a.
So we, we could bond against these funds, too?
Troy's not here, but that would be, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not aware that we could, but also too, again, they're, they're not coming in, in equal annual regular payments. They're, 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 some annual installments are going to be a little bit larger than previous years, so it's.
Okay, Councilor.
There's information in here also about the need to create um a dashboard where we're being very transparent about the way that the money is spent. Is the intent, because I'm, I'm not clear where Lacey's independent authority lies and where we have to work as sort of a, a group. Are we obligated to create a dashboard that is with the entire Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region? Could we make just a Thurston-specific dashboard, or even just a Lacey-specific dashboard?
Correct, and these agreements, the council for the Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater has yet to be created, but that, that's the expectation that it would be the subcommittee that has its own dashboard.
Well, it, it only specified that the dashboard had to be public-facing, so even if it was something that we posted ourselves and put out, say, we sent this money over there, this jurisdiction, that jurisdiction, that would suffice, right?
And it's going to come down again to what, what makes the most sense, what's the most efficient, while meeting the requirements and public-facing, of course.
Any other discussion on that? Then I would move that we authorize the city manager to execute the. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Already moved.
Moved and seconded. I'm already getting on to the next motion. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, um all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And now I'll move that we authorize the city manager to execute the interlocal agreement for the Opioid Abatement Council Independent Subcommittee.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion also passes unanimously. Back to you, City Manager.
All right, well, thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council. The next item we have on the city manager's report is a um, a contract bid award, and I'll turn it over to Scott Agar to uh present the, the, the bid proposal.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, and congratulations, Rick. We're all looking forward to working with you. So, anyway, uh, staff respectfully recommends that uh the contract for lift station 34 and 37 rehabilitation project, which is PW 2023-05, be awarded to Roglands Inc. in the amount of $1,070,910.00. The engineer's estimate for that project was $1,132,996.50. So there were four bidders on the project, there will be 250 working days, and work is scheduled to begin in August. Uh, let's see, here we go. Just wanted to pull up the vicinity slide there. I think I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but um, so these two stations are both about 20 years old. We have approximately 50 lift stations in our inventory, but in terms of 20 years, um, you know, they've, they're reaching the end of their useful life. If you wanted to compare that to an automobile, you know, if you owned an automobile for 20 years, that would be a long time, but I guarantee you the runtime on these pumps is a heck of a lot more in 20 years than the runtime you'll see on a vehicle. So they're just getting old and we need to replace them. While we're in there replacing them, there are, is some other work that can be done. A wastewater lift station is a very caustic environment, so we're going to recoat the wet wells of the lift station while we're in there, and then also take advantage of this time to do a little bit of electrical and mechanical work as well. So the location slide there shows, uh, in the upper right-hand portion of that slide, you'll see that's uh the lift station 34, which serves in the Squali Bluff area. And then in the lower portion of the slide, uh, that's lift station 37, which serves Horizon Point. So just to take a quick look at lift station configuration. I've got a delay, or maybe I'm frozen. So, anyway, um, I just wanted to show you a couple pictures of a pump and a lift station.
There it is.
There's a lift station. So each of these lift stations has two pumps. The uh little kind of cross-section to the right shows a lift station, your access port at the top, uh inflow coming from the left, your pumps located at the bottom, attached to a flange to the piping that then pumps the wastewater out and uphill. So if anyone's not familiar with the function of a wastewater lift station, wastewater will typically flow via gravity from, you know, your home or your business, flow downhill and till it reaches a lift station. Then the lift station will pump into a pressure main, pump it to the top of a hill or a high point where it'll then gravity flow down to either lot, or sometimes we need to go through one or two lift stations just to get there. So all this is doing is conveying the wastewater flow from a home or a business down to lot for treatment. Uh, one last point before I ask for questions is this will require a budget amendment, so you'll see that in your fall budget amendment. The amount will be about $650,000. Seems like a lot on a project that's a little over 1 million. There's two items that um somewhat cause this. One, we put these budgets together before the design of a project's complete, so the bu, this year's budget for this project uh was submitted over a year ago. So there's that thing. And then also, we're not totally done with post-COVID inflation. Uh, the cost of these pumps is significantly more than, than it was a year ago when we're calling around to talk to vendors and get prices. Isn't this some real cool art I'm showing you here? Anyway, there was a, a picture of a, a pump hanging from a, a boom truck there, but there you go. So those are the types of pumps that are installed at the base of the, of the wet wells, and the lower right-hand parts of those pumps are bolted together with a flange to the piping that then exits the, the lift station. So that's probably more than you wanted to know about lift stations, so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW 2023-05 to low bidder Roglands Inc. from Aberdeen, Washington, an amount of $1,070,910.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract to the low bidder. Is there any discussion?
How much of an increase in cost are we talking for pumps at this point? Are we talking percentage-wise, maybe 20, 30, or isn't even more than that?
I'd say at least 50%.
Although, the one thing I, I noticed, though, is that the engineer's estimate and the low bid, um, actually low bid was underneath the engineer's estimate, so was it just a timing thing on, on when you, you put it in for um, for budget purposes? Did we not have the engineer's estimate at the time?
Right, so we don't put the engineer's estimate together until the plan set and design is complete, so we have more accurate information at the time that we put the engineer's estimate together. But yeah, the other element is time, just in this year's time, there's been considerable inflation that we didn't anticipate.
Got it.
And is it, is this a contractor you've worked with before, Scott?
Yes, Roglands has done quite a bit of work for the city of Lacey, so yes, they have a good, good reputation.
Good.
How many more do we have coming up on this 20-year cycle, would you say, roughly?
Oh, wow, over, over the next 20 years?
Well, I, I guess, let me rephrase. How many more in the next two years will be meeting their 20-year usefulness, do you think?
Oh, well, I'd say over the next five years that we probably do have, I don't know, eight to 10 of these coming up, so quite a few.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded toward this Lacey contract to the low bidder. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
All right, so next, I'd like to introduce Eric Iverson, our water quality analyst. We're a Water Resources Department. He's going to provide some background on a contract that we're uh extending with Thurston County for monitoring Hicks Lake uh as part of our ongoing water quality monitoring program. So I'll turn it over to Eric.
Mr. City Manager, if I may, um, I live on Hicks Lake, I don't know if there's a conflict interest or not, but um, I'm just asking.
Doesn't, I, I know we're not there yet, but isn't, does this get reimbursed by the Hicks Lake Management District? Or is this something separate? Nope? So if it's not the Hicks Lake Management District?
No, I, I'd be happy to talk with you offline about this, but I, I'm not thinking that there would likely be a conflict.
Okay, thank you. Go for it.
I do have a presentation um that you guys can help follow along. So yeah, the, the monitoring contract with Hicks Lake uh has been something that the city has been partnering with Thurston County for, for quite some time. There's not a lot of changes made to this, uh, except for uh last time it went through, it was a two-year contract, and there was some request for administrative burden to be relieved to extend it. The timeline for this contract is for a five-year term, uh, so that little less burden won't have to come and talk about it too often. Um, but uh, okay, so, let's see here, they um, monitoring of Hicks Lake has been going on since about 1994, and I believe it was in 2010 there was some funding shortfall. So the city of Lacey picked it up in order to have the continuity of the, the monitoring report uh for the citizens. And uh, the Thurston County Environmental Health Department uh does the monitoring, um, along with Long Lake, like Patterson, Alder Lake, a lot of other lakes in the, in the county. So everything is all done the same, similar reports being produced. For us, the report is uh prepared on an annual basis, and we have it available online for citizens if they want to look at it. Overall, the uh water quality of Hicks Lake has been um designated as good. Uh, there hasn't been large uh issues going on. There we go. And, so hopefully I got all those numbers right, the 1994, 20, yeah, there we go. And so um, yeah, uh, six months out of the year, there's uh fish and wildlife access to the lake at a um boat launch, and we also have Wenches Park uh on the west side that provides access for people. So that's a little bit of background about it. Getting into some of the details of the contract, there's some breakdown in cost on the next slide, uh, as well as um, uh, basically saying the lake's of good water quality. Okay, here we go. And so, yeah, so the scope, the, the different parameters that are looked at include transparency, color, the vertical water quality profile, so temperature, dissolved oxygen, pH, and specific conductivity up and down, up to the deepest part of the lake. It also includes nutrients such as phosphorus and nitrogen, chlorophyll and phytophytin A, uh, which have to do with um the algae, uh, and phytoplankton that's present. And anytime there is an algae bloom, if it's of concern, it is identified, uh, so that we're certain if it's a blue-green algae bloom with some less-than-good effects. Previous costs and current costs, they're, they're just scaled up on an annual basis. Uh, there's no major changes um to those costs. And um, and the next slide just shows a picture of the lake uh for you guys as reference. And then um, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Can I get a motion, please?
I've moved the authorized city manager to sign contract with Thurston County to perform water quality monitoring of Hicks Lake.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions, Councilor?
Just a, a stray question. You said that the quality of the water has generally been good. Is that on a rating scale?
Yes, that is on a rating scale called the Trophic State Indices, and um, based on basically if there's very low nutrients, uh, middle amount of nutrients and high nutrients, and we are in the middle amount of nutrients where it allows growth of plants and animals at a moderate, moderate level, able to sustain their life.
So is there a rating above good, that it's better?
There is a rating of excellent. Yes, there is, um, and we're not quite in that.
Thank you.
Although, I, I have to say that someone who's grown up swimming in Hicks Lake and um, you know, are, isn't often, I, I really think Hicks Lake is the cleanest lake that I can think of in Thurston County right now. I mean, and it's, it, the benefit is um, all, of course, Hicks Pass and Long Lake are all connected, then goes out to Woodland Creek that goes all the way up the sound, and so that, this is the headwaters, and so everything gets flows away from Hicks Lake. But it's always had pretty good um water quality. Of course, you know, the, the big contributor there is, is, is homes that are on septic systems, and I know we've had these conversations about, you know, where do we look out next when we do our, our conversion from septic to sewers? And I, I definitely think Hicks Lake is a, a prime area to be, to look at, because all the septic systems unfortunately go right into Hicks Lake, and then all that stuff goes downstream from there, so it's not, Hicks Lake doesn't get hit as much, but everything down, Long Lake, when they have algae blooms, it's like toxic, it seems like, over there, so. Any other discussion?
Does, does development on the lake or lakeside development um have any effect or skew the, the water quality in any way?
It certainly could, depending on what kind of practices are taken. You know, fertilizer and septic can all affect the quality of the water.
There's a project about to happen on Hicks, Hicks Lake.
Yeah, but it, it did go, two, two projects, and it went, went through all that, and they, according to their own estimates, they're actually going to help improve the, the water quality of that area, and there's a whole long reasons about that, but.
We, we developed a lot of policies and planning around land use around our critical areas, and the lakes are, are those shorelines of the state, and our shoreline master program actually looks at um, you know, changing the shoreline into more natural landscaping, recommended practice for fertilizer. It also has provisions for discouraging or preventing septic, septic systems from, you know, if they, they fail, that they'd switch over. And, and then primarily just any development would have to look in context and set buffers and, and more native landscaping along the shoreline to help improve not only water quality, but also temperature and all those other things that go along with those environments.
And additionally, as far as development goes, you know, our development guidelines, public work standards allow us to require sewer-ing for new development regardless of the distance from sewer.
Correct.
Whereas for just a single property, there's. Whereas for just a single property, there's a, or like an existing property, single-family residential, there's a shorter distance requirement. So the multifamilies, the new multifamilies are sewered. They are actually installing a lift station in order to accomplish that.
And that distance requirement comes in when there's a failure, and then looking at distance for that home to hook up, and then looking at that cost. But the shoreline master program does encourage it to convert and, you know, look at it very stringently.
And I also remember, last time this was before us, we actually asked you to come back and do a five-year instead of a three-year term on these regular monitoring. So I remember that request. And so here we are, three years later, doing it for a five-year. So, yeah, go ahead.
This is a straight question, based on what Scott had said, but is the fact that we're putting a main in there and a lift station for the multifamily residential potentially beneficial to the single-family homes that are there? Because the main will be closer, so the hookup fees might be reduced?
Yes, it creates opportunity so that if they wanted to connect, you know, it's just their cost to connect to the main that fronts their property as well as connection fees. Correct.
So development occurs, extends those infrastructure, and then creates more capacity.
Is there any other discussion? Then there has been a motion and a second to have our city manager sign this contract with the Thurston County to perform water quality monitoring of Hicks Lake. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
All right, the last item I have is, you know, I think everybody's aware that we have a fantastic tradition for the Third of July fireworks celebration. And over the years, that has transferred over to Rainier Vista Park and mainly planned and coordinated by our Parks Department. I want to turn it over to Jen to kind of provide a recap of this year's event, which was fantastic and well-attended. And then also maybe touch upon, we're kicking off the Lacy Entune Series for the summer as well, can highlight that going forward for the community to engage with. So I'll turn it over to Jen.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. City Manager, like he said, asked me to give a brief update, because I can call you City Manager now officially, regarding Third of July and other upcoming summer events, obviously. So we held our annual Third of July celebration on Monday at Rainier Vista Park. I really just first want to thank all the members of the public, if you're watching, who attended. I want to thank Representative Strickland for coming out, also Deputy Mayor Miller, and any of the other council members that were there. I did see Councilmember Stedman. I was running around, so if I didn't see you, I wish I would have. In addition, we had several Parks Board members present, and one of them, Commissioner Wheeler, made his debut as MC, and I hear did a wonderful job. More thank yous to city staff in all departments. This is a huge collaboration led by the Parks Culture and Recreation Special Events Supervisor, Jeanette Seeler and her team, and almost all hands-on deck from our department. But special thank yous to Public Works, Public Affairs, Police Department, and of course, our city's Fire Marshal and his amazing team, also Lacy Fire District Three, and Thurston County Jeep Patrol, and so, so very many other community groups and partners to really pull this event off. So to start off, I wanted to show our promotional video for the event, just to give you a feel for what it's like there. That's not it?
You're on.
Hello? So if you go to the second slide and click on the black space, it should work.
For over fifty years, the city of Lacy has kicked off the celebration of our independence a day early. Join us July third at Rainier Vista Park for this annual community festival and enjoy free kids activities, live entertainment, and lots of fun. Pack a picnic or enjoy food from a great variety of food trucks. Cap off the night with a spectacular fireworks show set to music. The event opens at four P M. and admission is free. Parking is limited. Check our website for overflow parking and shuttle service. Visit lacyparks.org for the most up-to-date information. Presented by the city of Lacy Parks Culture and Recreation. Fireworks presented by Twin Star Credit Union, South Sound Center, and Interstate Batteries.
And one of the reasons I wanted to show the video is to also thank the sponsors to make the fireworks show possible. Oh, whoops, I'm trying to go to the next slide. So John Koch, our amazing drone pilot, was able to get us these comparison photos taken right around the same time of day, I believe nine P M. So for twenty twenty-two's event, you can see, in that photo, you can see, I don't know if you can see it, it's kind of far away, but we estimated in twenty twenty-three that we had more people than in twenty twenty-two, even though more people arrived later to the event. But if you look at some of the key areas, the far-left field there, at the top left of each photo, and so you can see the difference between the bottom and the top photo. And then the other key area was the area right around that central park shelter where the playground is. You can see a noticeable difference there, and then also on the bottom right of each photo. So we estimated twenty thousand-plus people last year, and we think there were probably twenty-five, twenty-five thousand-plus this year. And this is kind of a cool panoramic shot that John pieced together for us. We haven't downloaded all the photos yet. We'll look forward to seeing all of those of different, you know, segments of the event, but we did get these key drone photos. So this is kind of neat. It just shows the entire event area. And as City Manager said, the event was a great success. But moving on to the Lacy Entune Concert Series, that was kicked off yesterday, July fifth, with our noon program over at Huntermore Park. We had Full Metal Racket, the Washington National Guard Band, and there were about two hundred and fifty people in attendance. And then there, in the middle of the screen, you'll see the Play in the Parks series that kicked off today at Wonderwood Park showcasing Japan Creative Arts. For those of you who don't know, Play in the Parks is a free family entertainment and activity series that moves around to various parks' locations, trying to bring things to meet people where they are. That runs from July sixth to August tenth on Thursday afternoons. Jeanette reported, it was super fun, there were about two hundred and seventy-five people there, a lot of intergenerational dancing, all ages dancing to the taiko drums. So that was a really fun event today. And there, over on the right, you'll see that next Tuesday, July eleventh, the Lacy Entune Children's Entertainment Series kicks off with the Not It's at Huntermore Park. And so what's really great is these are all on our website in date order, so you can click on the event itself, and then there's another button that says Learn More, so you can learn more about the entertainment. Encourage everybody to go check that out. I'll highlight just a few more that are coming up, and then I'll let you go to the website for the rest of the summer schedule. And I did bring some hard copy brochures, if anybody wants those. And we do have these located at our Parks Counter and key locations in town as well, so I can pass those out. But next week's noon concert will be the Dimitri Matheny Group, the Brazil Project. And Play in the Parks there in the middle, that will feature the Wings, Aerial Acrobatics and Circus on Thursday, the thirteenth, that's at Rainier Vista Park. Friday, the fourteenth, you'll see over there on the right, the Concert and Movies series kicks off with Heart by Heart, featuring Steve Fosson and Michael De Rosier of Heart. And the movie, the movie following that entertainment is The Princess Bride. Inconceivable. So like I said, you want to go to lacyparks.org, choose Activities, and then Events, to see the rest of the summer events lineup, in addition to all the other classes and programs happening this summer, such as day camps, sports camps, teen camps, there's a free summer recreation and lunch program, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you want to choose Lacy Museum, you can see the activities that are happening at the museum as well. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Jen, and that concludes the City Manager Report tonight.
I saw the Lacy Police presence was, was it stepped up this year for the Third of July? It was, it was really good.
Yeah, we had additional officers in both the, at the event itself and also throughout the city. So we actually pretty well-staffed this past weekend.
That was good to see.
Well, thank you. It was, I've heard nothing but great things about the event already, so another very successful event in the city of Lacy, which is one of the things I talked about, about why the city of Lacy is one of the twenty-fourth best places to live in the United States, is all of our amazing events that are free. It's amazing. Anyway, okay, on to Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report, so Deputy Mayor.
One quick report. The E D C met on the twenty-eighth, and a couple of agenda items of note. North Thurston Public Schools updated the Young Child and Family Center project. The superintendent, Deb Clemmons, was there. She provided an update for the proposed project. The E D C Board receiving the update and is backing it a hundred percent. Hopefully, I, you know, I actually spent some time over these past couple days discussing it with Congresswoman Strickland, made her aware, her office aware, also Representative Bateman, who is also a strong supporter of the project. We also discussed the Southwest Washington Agricultural Business and Innovation Business Park. There was a presentation for that. The, we kind of, you know, heard from Peter Abarno, the E D C, Aslan Mead as well. The Board recognized and thanked Representative Abarno for his support and work to secure one point two-five million in funding from the state legislature this past session. The park is under construction, and its first two buildings are going up, and tenants have already been secured with leases signed for those buildings. The C B and I, the Center for Business and Innovation, had its scale-up training curriculum with, the Spring Program held two cohorts with over eighty-five participants. Twelve of them were from Thurston County, and the remainder were representing fourteen different counties in the state. The next scale-up will be in September with an emphasis on Spanish language curriculum. The Washington Center for Women in Business has commenced a podcast series that promotes women entrepreneurs. And the E D C and the C B and I have created and tendered for funding in partnership with the Washington State Arts Commission, a program titled Creative Arts Economy Equity Accelerator. A lot of longer names this year, I guess, this. The proposal is based on four Thurston County pillars that support makers, artisans, creative entrepreneurs, the Southwest Washington Ag Park, Timwater Craft Brewing, Craft Distilling Center, an Olympic Arts Director Armory, District Armory, and the Lacy Maker Space. The Board of Directors, nominations, and elections, it is that time. The Board has, per the bylaws, formed an ad hoc nominations and elections committee to review and develop potential board members for the Board of Directors. There's going to be four spots available. The E D C has tickets for the board members. There's, there's a Economic Development Conference in August in Walla Walla. The conference is developed and held by the Washington Economic Development Association, and hopefully, some of us get to go to that. And that is my report.
Thank you. How about Councilmember Cox?
All right. Well, the big news is, yesterday, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Maple Court Enance Shelter with Governor Inslee in attendance. He was quite complimentary of all that Lacy has done to make this project go forward. We had state legislators, area mayors, and city council members, as well as the Regional Housing Council leadership. I have to tell you, the transition from rundown motel rooms to improved rooms that are going to be housing a hundred and twenty people is remarkable. I mean, they are going to be very nice accommodations for the people, and there will be community kitchens, and it's going to be a really well-run operation. And I didn't quite say it yesterday, but I will say it today. I am just confident that it's going to be a much better neighbor than it has been in the past. So it was a privilege to be part of that yesterday, and I think we're off to a good start. We've got the first, is it sixteen residents? Fourteen, sixteen?
There's eight, eight from last week, and then today, they should be bringing eight more today and tomorrow.
Okay. So the first residents are in, a small number, and the plan is to move in groups of about ten and gradually fill up by mid-August. And so that we can have an orderly transition into, into this and not just dump a hundred people into a new place. So I'm very excited about it. The Regional Housing Council did meet on June the twenty-eighth, and we reviewed options for a work plan, which would be a first for this new organization. This would be for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. We haven't made final decisions yet, but there's been a proposal to do a crosswalk of individual jurisdiction housing action plans and identify common topics that would benefit from regional collaboration, and that appears to have the most support. So this could include things like renter protections, manufactured home park preservation, data collection, and regional funds, funding. So we're going to be meeting again in a few weeks, and hopefully, we will close in on that. We also agreed to provide written comment to the State Department of Commerce opposing changes to the Housing Trust Fund authorizing statutes, because these changes will make it more difficult for counties like Thurston to get funding. And we also agreed to send a letter of support to the Washington State Housing Finance Commission urging consideration of Southport Financial's proposed hundred-and-sixty-two-unit low-income housing project for four percent low-income housing tax credits if there are unused state bonding funds available. This was among twenty-two proposals that were considered. Only nine were selected, and this one unfortunately was not. But we want to be in line, just in case there is some money that falls out of it. So there's that. Apologize for my voice. And then the, where we go? Climate action. I just did that, sorry. I think I'm done, sorry.
End of your report?
End of my report.
Okay. Then Councilmember Greenstein.
Just one quick report from EMS Medic One met on June twenty-first, and just a couple items I want to update everyone on. I've talked about both of these before, but kind of want to tell you where we are now. So we've talked about the entryway program at Providence, where they're actually taking people off of ambulances to be able to treat them until there's room to bring them in. The contract is now finalized, so Providence and Olympic Ambulance now have a contract that's no longer being paid for by EMS. It's, they have a private contract, so Providence is actually paying Olympic Ambulance to staff that whenever needed. So, which is a big improvement, and, you know, hopefully, it will help with the flow and get the ambulances back out on the road, which is the key there. The other topic is the levy. You've heard me mention in the past that we had some issues with the, well, we'll call them issues, with how the Department of Revenue interpreted the ballot levy, the ballot language, which we thought was going to create some significant shortages and, you know, in our funding. Staff did a really amazing job of putting some things together, changing some things, and moving some things to leases and so on, that we are now going to be able to deliver everything that was promised to the voters when we went out for the ballot measure, including the eighth medic unit. We'll be able, we will be able to deliver that on time as planned, the upgrades and replacement of some of the equipment that's very outdated, CPR classes. So everything that was promised to the voters when they made, when they voted, they will still get without any additional taxes, without having to go back out to the public. We will be able to wait until twenty-seven or twenty-eight to go out to the public, which is as originally planned. So that was some really good news. And that is my report.
That is good news. I didn't think you were going to be able to pull that off.
I didn't think we would either.
Yeah.
They did, they did a really good job, staff. Did a great job on that.
Councilmember Stedman.
All right, I would have a community action report, but I was on family vacation when they had a retreat, and it was several days long. But other than that, I did attend the Third of July fireworks, spectacular. Saw Robin and Deputy Mayor Malcolm Miller, he did a great job speaking to the crowd, amping them up, getting ready for the show. Marilyn Strickland was great, as usual. You know, I knew it was going to be more than. You know, I knew it was going to be more than previous years because it was so crowded and everybody was just festive and had a great mood. And that's what parks are about, is bringing the quality of life when you're not at work and you're spending time with your family and neighbors and friends and just making that real good quality time. Other than that, you know, when you mentioned the music in the park and you brought up the, right before you said the "has-nots" or the "not-its," I almost said "one, two, three", if anybody else was doing that. But, you know, you also brought up Princess Bride. And for a moment there, we forgot that, you know, politics are involved and we all shared a smile and we said a couple lines from the movie. And that's really great. That's what's awesome about this council is, you know, we talk about some heavy topics that aren't always comfortable, but we're also lighthearted and we have welcoming, inviting atmosphere. And that gets the public involved. And that's what it's really all about, in my opinion. So I just wanted to, you know, I noticed that and I wanted to make sure that you guys noticed it too. Because it's really something special. Other councils and other partnerships, not just here in Washington or in nation, share that. It's really special, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick report from Solid Waste. We did meet yesterday and it was a fairly brief meeting. We had a quick post-alleg session update. Emphasis on the conversation was strategizing the implementation of recycling food waste and a couple of other short topics. We also had our capital facilities project update. I have gone over a lot of those updates in previous meetings presented to the council. There hasn't been any real changes, but we are on track for our new SCADA system to be completed this month, as well as a new flare system. No other changes since my last report on capital facilities. We did have a conversation about the current bylaws regarding board membership and the effect the additional commissioner seats would have on the current matrix. There's no decision being made yet to modify the existing bylaws, but we probably will. The sentiment is to keep a cap of 16 members for our board. And we're just kind of going over the intricacies of that. And I will follow up when we're closer to making a decision. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez.
I don't have a report. Thurston Regional Planning Council meets tomorrow. I missed the, well, we're having an ORCA board meeting. Inner City Transit meeting yesterday was canceled and the Board of Health is canceled. So slower month. It's somewhat welcome.
Well, before I talk about our next agenda item, which is going to an executive session, I do want to give a quick shout-out to our deputy mayor. I think between this past several months, between my daughter, who's just graduated from high school and all of her last things that she did as a senior, to me recently being under the weather and then also going on vacation, you've had to take over for a lot of different things over the past several months. And it gives you a little hint of what it's like, you know, the extra, sometimes the extra responsibility as a mayor. But I just want to thank you for stepping in and doing all those things. And it goes very much appreciated. Okay, with that, this council will now meet in the executive session relating to a property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42-30.110-1B. The council will be in the executive session for 15 minutes. 15 minutes. We will adjourn till, we'll go into the executive session at 7:25. So is that good enough for everyone to have a quick beg? 7:25, so in six minutes, then we'll be in executive session for 15 minutes. Till 7:40. And so until that, I'm going to adjourn into an executive session. Well, it is just about 7:40. There, now it's 7:40. The council is, was in an executive session to talk about a property acquisition. No decisions were made. Now we've reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, I will call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.